If I call P, she gonna confirm?
Oh, she will absolutely confirm it.
What do you, look, I've never heard you say-
Everything, I loathe it, cuz I loathe it, it's not fun.
Are we ready? Alright, everybody, welcome to another edition of the Leadership Been Live Podcast with your host Ricardo Rice and my co-host-
Simone Sherry.
Alright, so we are continuing, we started last Friday with highlighting African-American men who are running for office, and we're continuing that trend on this week, so I'm gonna let today's guest introduce himself and tell you a little bit about himself.
Hi, how you doing? My name is Larry Carter, I am running for Atlanta City Council District Four. I'm in the city of Atlanta, I've been in District Four since 2009. I've been an educator, a community organizer, a community leader, um, I'm a husband, I'm a brother, I'm a neighbor. I mean, the list goes on, but I'm running just because we're at a pivotal point in Atlanta when affordability is waning, uh, public safety, you know, reproductive justice rights, the gambit goes on. Um, our district has been underserved for twenty years at this point. Uh, we don't have access to fresh food, people don't have, uh, good access to transportation to get to work. So when we're thinking about going forward, as Atlanta becomes a tech hub, we really have to think forward and make sure that we are looking out for the least of us, um, and that's why I'm running to make sure that everyday people have a voice.
Whose seat is that?
Uh, Cleto Winslow actually is in the seat now, it's District Four seat.
Can you clarify really quick where District Four, what neighborhood is District Four?
Yeah, so, um, the most north boundary would be, um, North Avenue, right where Georgia Tech is, and it comes down through Centennial Park, uh, parts of Castleberry Hill.
Real Atlanta.
Uh, right.
That's real Atlanta.
Downtown, West End, Westview, Oakland City.
Oh, beautiful.
Yeah, Venetian Hills, parts of Venetian Hills, parts of Cascade, so yeah, parts of Westview, so yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's real Atlanta, I thought we were talking about like some, most of you were like-
You thought, you thought Brookhaven?
Yeah, you know, people are like, oh, well, you know, so then you go, uh, that's not really Atlanta, that's real Atlanta. There are a lot of issues in that area.
That's pretty diverse, though, cuz Georgia Tech, like, that's kind of a diverse little-
It's very diverse, we have the AUC, we have parts of Georgia Tech, we have parts of Georgia State, so, um, you know.
Massive homelessness that nobody really wants to talk about, uh, yeah.
We're gonna talk about it, though.
Yeah, of course.
We are gonna talk about it.
We're gonna get under every stone, but yeah, the massive homeless problem that they have, that nobody really wants to talk about, and, you know, trying to truck folks off, and, yeah, don't get me started.
Absolutely, so.
Alright, so everybody knows, I make no qualms about it, uh, that our Atlanta City Council sucks, I make no qualms about it, I can say that because we do that, and that's based off the, the latest movements, and y'all know how I feel about the ninety million dollar debacle, and, you know, how you skip over all the real issues to just divert ninety million dollars that I didn't know we had to a place called Cop City. So, yeah, right now, they all suck, and especially the people that are running for mayor, you need to step down. Like, clearly, you are so disconnected, it's not even funny, you need to step down at this point, like, I, I can't even, I said what I said and I meant it. But I digress, so Simone, what's the one that-
Um, we're gonna talk a little bit, since we've got Larry here to, to kind of walk us through some of these issues. We wanna talk about crime and your take on crime, um, we know that there are gonna be more and more hearings coming this, later this year, at the state level about, um, Buckhead seceding from Atlanta, so, um, there's also been more and more reports that have come out from, uh, not just UGA, but also from Valdosta State about what that could mean for Atlanta, so I think we should talk a little bit about that, um, talk about that area, even if that's outside of your district, and what that could potentially mean. Um, Cop City, of course, like, that's a, a big stance that you've taken, at least has been, stop Cop City, so I'm, I'm sure we'll have a chance to revisit that conversation.
Do we have?
And then, we, just a little, just a little bit, um, and then also, I, I do wanna talk a little bit about your platform and some of the stuff that I, I was able to at least read, read and read about you, um, especially as it pertains to like term limits, and like, maybe if there is some sort of culture of being a politician that really does just kind of make it very difficult to continue to serve people really, really well, um, and then we can get on to, to some other news, but I think that i- if we're careful, we'll still end up very close to an hour. Meaning, like, if we cut these conversations short-
Where were you going with that?
Very short, and we're very judicious with time, I still think we're gonna fill, uh, there's just a lot, there's a lot of news around Atlanta all the time. Georgia's become like the center of the political universe for this entire country, so, and I think we're seeing that with the spending, too, so.
And I think that's, that's what makes it important, and this makes it a really important race, is because everybody's watching Atlanta right now. Um, all eyes are on Georgia, so we have to have leadership that's thinking forward. A lot of things are changing politically, um, economically, and we really have to be good stewards. And, and that's what I think is gonna be an important part of this race, is who is gonna be a good steward for the next four years.
Okay, so speaking of our current administration, maybe even outside of the council a little bit, be- before we, just before we move into crime, Atlanta is a city that has like a good eclectic mix of folks, at least in the South. The South, I don't think, is known for its diversity of populations, I think the South is usually very black or very white, and with very little in between, or very little diversity outside of that, but Atlanta has a good little mix of people, and I know that when, um, when Mayor Keisha first took office, we talked a little bit about the LGBTQ initiative, talked a little bit about like what that agenda would look like, what have, what have been your feelings about how the queer community has been supported in Atlanta under Mayor Keisha, or even before?
Um, I think, so, um, the saying that Atlanta is too busy to hate, I think it should be like, we shouldn't be too busy to love. So that's one of the things that I really think is a change in perspective, um, and I think Mayor Bottoms has done some great things for the LGBTQ plus community, uh, when you talk about, uh, the restrooms, which I think restrooms are a, a large thing when we talk about homeless populations, people experiencing homelessness, having public restrooms throughout the city, uh, will help people to have access, cuz a lot of people are arrested for urinating in public and things of that nature, because there's no access, businesses don't let you come in to use their restrooms. But getting back to the LB, sorry.
Actually, I was gonna see where you were going with it, I was like, well, where did you go with the stuff?
I'm gonna circle back, but yeah, yeah, I think, uh, that as far as having a liaison that's really focused on the issues, I think sometimes, when I look at other cities, I, I study other cities a lot, having a liaison that's focused on the LGBTQ plus issues is pivotal, like, when you just start something, it's hard to take a measure of what's been done in four years opposed to someone who's been doing the work for decades.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I think she's taking steps in the right direction, but it's definitely gonna take more than four years, uh, to move all the things that she was trying to do forward.
You were nicer than me, cuz I, I'm not a fan of Keisha either, so you were nicer than I am. Look, I'm just, at this point, we need to start being honest about stuff, and in my opinion, and I can back this up with facts, I said it before, I will continue to say until she leaves office, I feel like Keisha did more interviews and, uh, photo shoots, and she actually did work, when you consider what we're dealing with and what has happened, and, and I'm not even talking about just COVID.
I don't know, I understand.
Just in general, what has happened the last four years, Keisha didn't even get a low-hanging fruit, like-
Well, we know that queer communities are victims of violence far more often than not, um, victims especially of violent crimes and hate crimes, which we, we talked a lot about the hate crime legislation last year, like at the state level, but a lot of non-discrimination policies, I think, were sort of her goal of that task force, which, um, I don't know if it involves all, a lot of queer people, or mostly queer people, I know it involves some business leaders, I don't really know what the representation looks like of that task force, I didn't, I, I don't know, I'm not gonna assume.
Well, I, I do know a few people actually on the task force, um, like Aaron Rice, he's at, uh, Families First.
Okay.
So he is a part of the queer community as well, so, so there are, there's a mixture, um, and I, I hear what you're saying, but I think about, I think about it holistically, like, we had a cyber attack, we had a pandemic, we had a racial uprising with, and that's in the four years that she's been in office, so there's been a lot of things that have happened.
You're saying you gotta give it context.
Yeah, 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 taking things out of context, it's, it's hard to do that, but it's like, when you're focused on putting out so many fires, it's hard to really, that's like people talking about President Obama and saying he didn't do much, but it's like, when you're constantly fighting against a governor, fighting this, fighting that, it's hard to really even move forward with doing things. I mean, she did raise half a billion dollars, which is fifty percent of what she said for affordable housing.
Oh, we really wanna get into a conversation about affordable housing? Do we really wanna, do we really wanna get in the conversation about affordable housing?
Not quite yet, although there is overlap-
Yeah, yeah.
With the queer community and housing, like-
Yeah, cuz, cuz housing, that, that's a problem, with, you know, we, what we need to do is streamline a lot of our processes, um, at City Hall. I think, ugh, the systems are antiquated.
Yeah.
You know, that, that, just the way we're, we're, basically, I've said it and I'll say it again, Atlanta has been running like a small ci- small-town city, when it's, it wants to be like the city on the hill. You have to operate, you have to have the systems, you have to have the procedures in place, and that's kind of what I would bring to council, is really thinking forward, how are we gonna manage, like, we're bringing all of these tech companies and our-
Okay, let me give you this, you have to ignore my face, cuz I just really, I like, my, my stance on Keisha, or Mayor Bottoms, is, comes from the guests that we have, and a lot of the guests have made the same gripe, and these are boots-on-the-ground that are actually working, have, working with her and have worked with Kaseem, and they all have been consistent in saying that she's not even doing the minimum, she's not taking their calls, she's not having meetings with anybody. Even, I've read reports that the people that are in the, where she is, don't even know where she is half the time, like, so it's really based off people that come in that are doing the work, saying these things, and then I'm just looking around, I'm like, and I'm sorry, I do hold black leadership to a higher standard as it pertains to our communities, and when it pertains to our communities, I just don't feel like Keisha did a lot, yeah, a lot happened, but if you delegate and you really are taking meetings from boots-on-the-ground and have a united front, you could at least put out the dumpster fires, now I know there's a bonfire, but you can at least put out a lot of these dumpster fires, if you're not taking meetings, you're not talking to the boots-on-the-ground, you can't put out any fires, so everything's just kind of ablaze, and I feel like that's what it's been. But meanwhile, you're doing interviews on The View about giving your opinion on other people's city, wait up, I was him, man, if you were him, what are you doing now? What about you being you? Like, so that's where my stuff-
Well, I'm quick to listen and slow to judge, because it's hard to, uh, walk in someone else's shoes without knowing-
Yes, but you ran for mayor, and you knew that running for mayor was gonna be a, me, a very big task.
I, I, it definitely is a big task, and I don't think one person is responsible, I think we all have a responsibility. I think that's, that's one of the issues that I see in the city, too, is everybody's waiting for Superman. We have to work together to make the change, that's why I started in Ashview Heights, like, it's right beside the AUC. We had, what, uh, maybe like a sixty-five percent vacancy rate in two thousand nine when I moved in? So, I was just trying to understand, why is this community that is right next to these HBCUs in the heart of Black Mecca so underserved, and it's because the people have been disenfranchised, like, that people have come and made promises and they're not shown up, but what I wanted to do is engage them in a way where you have power, people are the power, it's not power to the people, people are the power. So when you show up and you vote, you take your power back, you put in there who you want in there. When you show up and complain, you take your power, people talk about, uh, the difference between black communities and white communities a lot of time. Spending time, I taught in Grant Park, I see how those parents organize and show up and complain if the bike lane line is not where they needed to be, they'll complain about the smallest things, so much so that their leaders will try to do everything right so they don't show up. Whereas, we're waiting for our leaders to stand up and do everything for us sometimes, not always, that's definitely not always the case. But sometimes we get frustrated with the system because we have been pushed down so many times that we, um, we have a lot of trauma around showing up and taking our power back.
Right, which that's, I, I'm glad that you made that point, because we were just talking about turnout, um, on the last episode, because all these polls came out about how much, uh, we're registered, like, our registration rate for the state of Georgia and the city of Atlanta metro area has just gone through the roof, but does that equal turnout was kind of our biggest question, like, I, we do a lot of polls, especially for races like the mayoral race, trying to see like where people are, what people's opinions are. I think if opinions counted as votes, we'd have like a hundred percent participation, but the question is like, who's going to actually turn out on the day and do the actual work, and I think that that work is important, and like, in defense of like Mayor Keisha, and even also of like, um, which she was in, I think, in The Post, Washington Post this past weekend, the same, this past week, she was in The Post, and I think, uh, DA Fonny Willis was on, in Time Magazine.
Yeah, shout out to Fonny, I've seen Fonny more than I've seen Fonny in a long time, this whole weekend.
But in defense of that, I also think you have to reach people with what you're doing, too, like, there's also a lot of, a lot of government actors who are doing really, really, really hard work, even before, um, during the last election cycle, I was thinking about this with Fulton County, like, those people were doing a lot of work, but like, what got publicity were the problems, and they were out in front of that, they didn't have, they have a one-man communications team, like, I think to a certain extent, you almost have to like, measure, okay, do I wanna do substantive work and make sure that I'm checking boxes and I'm making changes, but also make sure people know about it, because if they don't, the only thing that'll ever get publicity are probably the things I'm not trying to, to promote, or the things that I can't control.
What's the conversation I have with folks all the time, you're at a place now where you can't hate social media, and a lot of people hate social media, you cannot hate social media, it's a part of what you do, people want to know, I think like the average Joe. Yeah, I, my, my degrees are in pre-law and all that stuff, but I think like the average Joe, so to the average Joe, when you tell me, when Keisha's out here going with a slogan, you know, your mayor's name is Keisha, blah, blah, and people gravitate to it, when you get in office, I wanna see, because I'm probably, if I'm the average Joe, especially in this climate, I probably still have two or three jobs, I'm still trying to figure out what's going on with my kids, um, I'm still trying to balance education and daycare and stuff, I'm not probably reading-
I hear ya.
Political stuff, I, so you gotta show me-
Yeah.
What you're doing, so I think like the average Joe, so, you know, of course, I have deeper insight because of the guest, but-
You could argue that's a better strategy than maybe like the larger outlets and the booked appearances, I, I could-
No, I could, I could see that, I feel like that is something that I do say that's a, um, opportunity for growth for the city, I think.
Opportunity for growth, not a weakness. Opportunity for growth.
It's opportunity for growth. I am not a politician.
He's very good wording.
I am not a politician.
His attribute.
This is my personality, honestly, you can ask anybody who's known me over time.
I hear ya, I hear ya.
Like, you choose the right words, I, I typically don't.
It is, because when you think about it, um, there are services that are available that people don't know about, like the PAD program and different things that are happening in the city. You, you know, rental assistance and, uh, all, all those things are available, but the city has not done a great job of informing and engaging. So you have to engage, educate, and then activate, so we're missing that engage and educate, and we just want people to be activated, and it doesn't work that way.
Really well put.
Well, my, okay, so my fear going into this session of, uh, elections-
This new season?
This new season of elections is faith in black leadership, like, for me, this ninety million Atlanta City Council debacle, I just completely lost faith in black leadership, cuz like I said, this was not like a board of white people that voted for this, this was a lot of black folks on here that said, and when you looked at who voted yes, it was like, how could you vote yes to something like this when we have an affordable housing crisis, not even an issue, crisis? You know, homeless people can't even live on the bridges a lot of times, cuz they put stuff under these bridges, so we just have like nomadic homeless people wandering around the city cuz they have to pay for their bill.
People experiencing homelessness.
Yep, people are experiencing homelessness, so let's, let's give people a little bit more context unless they don't, that's true, that's true, I mean, I think that's even better than like-
I don't wanna use cute words, I wanna be blunt today.
I think that's even better.
I wanna be blunt today. We have nomadic homeless people roaming around the city.
Nomadic people experiencing homelessness.
Because the same thing.
I would say unhoused.
We're splitting, if we're splitting hairs.
Because nomadic kind of implies like, like, there's, there's cultures that are, that's a part of like their actual, so anyway, uh, one, just for background, what Ricardo was talking about with this price tag that is very upsetting, um, to him, is, has, was the conversation we had-
Ninety million dollars.
About Cop City, which followed like, almost a day or more than a day's worth of like public comment and public debate to try to stop the effort of funding, um, wasn't, wasn't Greg Bluestein, uh, some great agency reporter, reporter referred to it as a cop playground, or a cop wonderland, or something like that.
I mean-
Really, it's, it's meant to be a training facility, it's going to, um, it's gonna be built over the course of a couple of years, the funding as well would be dispersed over the course of a couple of years, it was meant to be an effort, I think, of good faith. There have been a lot of conversations about crime in Atlanta, so let's just, just to switch topics and, and move into that, um, Labor Day was a violent weekend in the city, like, it was, there was, there was a shooting outside of the Black Pride, a Black Pride event downtown. Um, DA Willis, who we just mentioned, was telling people not to go to Piedmont Park alone, um, which is not-
Well, we are finding dead bodies in Piedmont Park, which has never been a thing, so that's-
So, yeah, and it's not just an Atlanta problem, I, I do wanna like, highlight that, it's not just an Atlanta problem. Violent crime has gone up across the country since the pandemic period, like, full stop, even in Spalding County, it's just, it's gone up. Um, domestic violence, mental health, and, and, um, suicide attempts, and also suicides, those have gone up, so it's, it's not just Atlanta. But this is an issue that is concerning a lot of people, and there was a huge, huge debate about this, uh, at this city level. But, I know where you stand, but can you tell people about your reactions to, to Cop City, um, where you stand now, what you think the next step should be, those sorts of things?
Uh, so, when it comes to Cop City, I think that, uh, it was done very poorly, um, actually, my husband and I were riding down the street, and he was like, wait, these bike lanes are on the wrong side, they should be on the other side of the cars, but that's what happens in Atlanta when we're trying to push things forward, we, we go so fast sometimes, and then we have to-
Fix it.
Fix it, instead of taking our time and doing it right the first time, I don't think Cop City should go where it's proposed to go. I do think that we do need a new facility, but I think it should be done, um, in a more equitable and inclusive way. So if you're going to a community, I believe in inclusive development, that's one of my platforms, is the community should be at the table in the beginning, middle, and end, these are the people who are gonna be living with this day in and day out. You're talking about having fires set, and, you know, shooting, and all of these things, and, and families are in a mile range. So when you think about reproductive justice, how, di- did you think about it? And, and that's the question, you, you probably didn't, because it was outside of the city limits, so it's like-
Okay, we have a rule, when you use a term that people probably know what it means, you have to explain it, what is reproductive justice?
So reproductive justice means you have the right to have a child, not have a child, and if you have a child, you should be able to raise them in a safe, healthy environment.
So when you say the people, when you talk about inclusive development, which we had Sterling Johnson here, um, from Partnership for Southern Equity to talk a little bit more about that, are you talking about, does that include legacy residents, does that mean only legacy residents?
No, that means everybody who's there.
So it also means the businesses, like, the, the new folks and the, the, okay.
Because, cuz everybody's gonna be affected by this one way or the another, so having a representative from the business community, having a representative-
Oh.
Speaking of fires.
We're just gonna check and see if we see-
We saw our people, there seems to be, the fire alarm went off in the building.
This conversation was so hot, it set the fire alarm.
God, Larry, we've been doing this here for like a year, that ain't never happened. Everybody check a rule.
Right, that's why I'm just trying to-
That means y'all need to vote for me November second.
I don't know how we segue to that, but, uh, okay, shameless plug, and then the best of turmoil, okay?
Only because we've never had a drill, I do wanna make sure this is a drill.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. While we wait confirmation, this podcast is being sponsored by Skillshare, Skillshare is an online platform.
Oh, Larry, you cannot come back to the show, it just never happens, good god.
Oh, no.
Maybe that's a sign for me to chill out, I might be on a hundred and sixty, maybe that's a sign for me to chill out.
I was gonna say, we can do a, a quick segue, I think that would be helpful, are you familiar with the conversation around Nicki Minaj's husband?
Oh, my god, we really having that conversation, that's what you wanna segue to?
I sent you the clip so that you could get caught up, but we don't have a lot of time for entertainment today.
No, actually, if we're gonna talk about, we need to go to R. Kelly, if we're gonna talk about anything, we need to go to R. Kelly. Okay, so, okay, so this apparently has been, cuz I was at a forum, and this was the question that was asked, can you separate R. Kelly from, R. Kelly the producer, songwriter, beloved, uh, music maker from R. Kelly the convicted sex offender, can you separate that, that's apparently is the conversation now?
We're having a free-flowing conversation.
Are we pa- I don't know, are we paused?
Is this a drill?
Y'all gonna come back to it? There, it's the whole building, so every-
Okay, okay.
So we'll find out.
Okay, okay, cool, in the meantime, I feel pretty secure in here.
Yeah, we can just break the window.
Relatively, relatively secure in here.
I was like, can I pick up one of these chairs and break a window?
Yeah, cuz I don't think it's in here, cuz there's no apply, there's no apply to this in here, so.
I will.
So that's the question, can you separate the artist from the person?
You know, I just had this conversation with my barber, and this is what I'll say, um, so, when you use your artistry to be a sex offender, it's different if you were just a sex offender, but you're using your platform to lure people. I'm the Pied Piper, which if you know what the Pied Piper is, they use music to lure the kids away from the village. So literally, that's what you claim to be, and that's what you've been doing, so you were aware of it.
Not good.
Yeah, but, is that really?
Not good, not good.
That's what, a lot into that, though.
So, so are you happy with this verdict, first?
Um, I-
Do you think it's, what, what is, what is justice, what is justice in this case?
The, I, I am not a, I'm not on the jury, I haven't heard all of the information, I'm not the judge, however, I, as a person who has been, um, sexually assaulted in my past, I have strong feelings about that, because people trust you with their children, and you misuse that trust, so it, it shapes the life of everybody you touch from then on, when you move on and do whatever you're gonna go, go and do, but like, you've changed the trajectory of people's lives.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, but the problem with this is, I don't feel like this is a regular case, we have seen, even if you look at the documentaries, people say, yes, I brought the kids to him, or yes, I knew this was going on, I, to just take down R. Kelly is just not enough for me, and I feel like this is the issue with cases like this, to just take down R. Kelly is not enough, what about all the people that had a hand in bringing him the kids?
Yeah, they should be found guilty, too, but how can you talk about holding leadership, black leadership accountable, and this is a leader in our community?
I didn't say let him off the hook now.
Yeah, you're just saying in addition to.
I'm just saying, in addition to getting him, everybody, you need to, you take out the bandwagon and round up everybody-
I agree.
That said, I brought ki- and the parents-
Cuz it's sex trafficking.
Literally, the parents who knew, well, I left my kid there, you know, cuz I just wanted to be successful, things of that magnitude, but you knew what was going on.
But, to say they knew necessarily is a, I think, an overstatement, if, uh-
I don't think so, I don't think so.
No, no, I can't hear it in the headphone.
I can hear.
Outside of the headphone.
No, you, you hear that.
Oh, no.
In the headphone.
Mm-mm.
I know, you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to talk if you could hear in the headphone. Yeah, yeah, well, I remember. Oh, okay, cool, cool, cool.
Wait, did we stop the recorder and it was still going? Oh, god, I'm gonna have to suck, I'm gonna have to-
You just gotta cut it, just gotta cut it.
I don't normally have to touch the podcast, now I have to actually edit the podcast.
Send it to me, what I was gonna, what I was gonna say is, um, I hear, I completely hear what you're saying, and I think it makes sense, and there are a lot of people involved, I-
A lot of people.
Yeah, I feel, I feel differently about this than I do about his, the documentary and the last couple of stories in which there were his mansion and his strange practices of like, you know, having people in a house, those were, those were adults. I feel differently about adults, I do, I feel differently about adults than I do about the teenagers that were, that I-
The whole thing is just weird to me, like, when you, when you watch the documentaries-
It's weird, but what I mean is-
Like, when you watch documentaries and people say they witnessed all this stuff, and they participated in all this stuff, it's like, and you were, oh, you slept at night? Knowing that you dropped a fifteen-year-old, there are people that are saying they knew about Aleah, oh, well, you know, I walked in the room and saw Aleah doing such and such, and you knew her age and his age, you were okay, and you slept all these years fine with it? And everybody just wants to take R. Kelly, nobody's making the mention of getting everybody else that was involved in it? That's just a problem for me, like, that's, that's just a problem for me, so, I'm not saying R. Kelly should go off the hook, of course not, but I'm saying it shouldn't just be him, not when all these people have admitted that they had a hand in this stuff, they should all go down with him. Like, you should send that kind of message in our community, that we're not getting just you, we get everybody, everybody that was involved, we coming for you. That's my thing about this.
Yep.
But, on the flip side, I personally can't cancel the music, I'm sorry, I just can't, I, I don't, when I listen to TP2.com, I don't see R. Kelly having sex with kids, I have some very, uh, pertinent memories attached to some of those songs, and when I play them, that's what I think of, so they are very, uh, sentimental to me, because I, um, I'm a music person, I'm a music lover. So a lot of my memories are synonymous with songs, so when I hear certain songs, I'm teleported back to that space, and there's a lot of R. Kelly music, I'm not even gonna front, so for me cancelling R. Kelly?
So I have a question, would you have those, if, if people actually held him accountable when it first came out, would you have those same memories? No.
That's true.
Yeah, because-
But, but, cuz, cuz this has been, if he would have been, if he would have got a, a trial like he should have when the video came out in, what, ni- the nineties? I mean, that didn't happen, but we all saw it, so everybody just ignored it anyway, so, tha- that's what I mean, is like, where does, where does accountability come in and stop, when you talk about holding people accountable, when everybody pretty much, I'm sure everybody at this table saw that video.
Which video, the golden shower video?
So I, I'm, I know about it, but of course, I did not see it, but I know about it.
I cannot penalize somebody for what they choose to do, and behind, if you choose, it's, you know, it's what I do, it's a, a thing that people like, the golden shower thing, way before R. Kelly did it.
It's not the, it's not the content, it's the fact that she was a child.
Oh, see, I didn't really know all the details, I didn't, I did, cuz the whole thing disgusts me, so I didn't really even, the whole thing disgusts me, like, anybody-
Not enough to stop listening and make memories to his music, though.
Well, that's the case, well, wait, now, if we're gonna do that, then if we're gonna go there, then we have to get rid of a lot of people uh, whose artistry, and that includes painters, uh, music people, you'd have to get rid of a lot of people for their sick fantasies and, and things that they've done that are unscrupulous, if we're gonna go that route.
Well, see, the, the thing is, again, what I say for my basis, is going back to if you're using that gift to-
So like, you're talking about Michael Jackson, or you're talking about Bill Cosby?
And you're talking about Marvin Gaye and all, cuz I just found some of his music, what his music was about, like, are we really doing-
Not what his music is about, but was he using his platform to lure pe- children in to do that, that's what I'm saying, is like, would you have the same access if you were not a celebrity to do these things?
I see what you're saying, but like-
It's, it's a difference.
I just feel like R. Kelly is at the end of a long line of the fact that like, this used to happen all the time, like, there's, there's a, the New York Post, Vox, they all did, the Guardian did huge articles about like every single like, movie producer, executive, like way before Harvey Weinstein, there's like twenty Harvey Weinsteins that like, Marilyn Monroe was fifteen, or Judy Garland was thirteen, and Shirley Temple was ten and had to sit on this grown man's lap, like, well-documented photographs.
To get into the industry, that's what you'd have to do, so I mean, I-
Very, but not up until recently have people decided like, well, maybe we should use consumerism to sort of decide that that's not okay, because previously, it was, and so you could say whatever you wanted to about these people, but at this, they were, that you were going to go through them, because they had the money and they had the power and they had the resources, so I think it's very important that, it has to come, has to be tied to money. Or people will remain powerful enough to do what they wanna do, I don't know why Bill Cosby had to say, make a comment, I think that's ridiculous. Uh, what are these, what are they called?
I saw the article, I'm not even gonna read that, cuz I don't wanna know who he is. You just got off yourself, you really wanna chime in on this, you just, you just got lucky enough to get out, you really wanna chime in on this? You should be quiet for the next twenty years.
He said that he quote got railroaded, that's the only thing that he officially said.
He said what?
Was that R. Kelly got railroaded.
I mean, do I think he's being made an example out of, I think there's an element of that, uh, I wanna see examples made out of other ethnicities, people who've done this, uh, not in particularly that level of artistry, but TV and things of that magnitude, I think they get slapped on the wrist, I do think that he's, you know, but at the same token, cuz Gerald's gonna be here like another week or two, and you know, he had clients on that case. So, I'm sure, I'm interested in what he's gonna say about that, but, uh, yeah, I just, I don't know, I, I get cancel culture, I actually respect cancel culture, but- I actually respect cancel culture, but you have to cancel a lot of folks if you're gonna cancel R. Kelly.
Well, I'm, I'm very, I'm, I'm not necessarily with cancel culture because I think it varies. So like, it, to me, I just think sometimes there's opportunities for growth.
I agree, and I don't, well, I don't believe that we give people those things, like with, with the, with the Ellen DeGeneres situation that came out like in May or April where she was just like exposed as this mean person, like that was the campaign, was that like, look how mean she is to people. And look at all these employees who hate working for Ellen, it was just like this whole thing. And it's like, we're canceling, like, and it's time to cancel Ellen, this rich privileged white woman, like, F her, she's mean, and it's like, so I understand child predators, I understand, I understand sexual assailants, mean people, I don't know that we need to end the careers of mean people.
I didn't understand how that happened.
Cause she was scaring people, like, and that didn't like to be scared and it made them cry and it's like, I, that was a, that was a little bit of a stretch for me.
It was a huge stretch. It wasn't even that she was accused of being an ist, there was no ist.
No, it's just like, she's mean.
You know, she's not in a good mood, every day, she's not in a good mood.
Okay, that's not a good example.
And she comes on stage and she dances and she is not in a good mood.
Right, right. She makes you happy, but she's really unhappy.
Okay, y'all have a terrible example, okay, that's not the best example.
But it, but that happens, so it's like, if you make a person mad that has enough access to create a campaign against you, there you have it.
Yeah, but I feel like that's, that's an anomaly, like reciprocally, I also respect cancel culture for cases like the baby. Like the fact that you felt like it was okay, which nobody, even I don't, and I actually love baby, I'm not even front. I love his music, I love how animated he is, I can't even front, but the fact that you thought it was acceptable to say that, and I don't even know what would make you, you're in the middle of a concert.
It was impromptu, yeah.
Yeah, but you're in the middle of a concert, you got like millions of fans and this is the only thing you could think to say?
But are we comparing, are we comparing him saying one thing in the middle of a concert to somebody molesting children for 20 years?
I wouldn't even compare him, I would just say cancel.
No, I think we're just talking about cancel worthiness, deservedness.
But I think he, that was a, a, a opportunity, that, that was ignorance that came out of his mouth. And I think we don't give people the opportunity to learn things they don't know, because we do know that in the African American community, toxic masculinity is a real thing. I mean, I grew up as a black gay young man and so, so I've seen it myself. And it's just like, so instead of addressing the root of the problem, we're just gonna address him. Well, why aren't we going to churches and talking about how it's not appropriate to talk about gay people in that way, so then, but a rapper can, but.
That's how I feel about Kevin Hart's, um, situation. I felt like, well, it's, maybe it's slightly different, I mean, he's an older person, but to me, it was just, I believe that we have to kind of give people the opportunity to be sorry and just be genuinely sorry.
Well, I think, but the issue with both of those situations is, we don't know how ignorant you are if you open your mouth. So it wasn't until Baby, we didn't know how ignorant he was to it until he opened his mouth, and then it's like, okay, well, since you're just ignorant and you bold enough to say this, yeah, somebody's gotta say something, you gotta do something, you gotta do the work.
Ignorant, should you stay in silence and remain that ignorant, or do you open your mouth so you can be educated, so you're not that ignorant anymore?
Yeah, but you'll never be educated if nobody knows you're that ignorant, you'll just kind of be.
That's what I'm, that, exactly, so if you don't open your mouth, no one will ever know.
That person's career should be over.
Well, I mean, we, how do you, I mean, you can't do anything if nobody says anything.
You gotta leave with her.
Bring it to our tech, well, in a perfect world, yes Larry, in a perfect world, that would be ideal, yes.
Why can't it be a perfect world, why can't it be the world we're creating?
Do you think Baby would have really sought out, uh, these issues if they didn't, yeah, counsels, they didn't make him because they wrecked, that's when we knew that he was that ignorant? Like, we, we're expecting, that statement, you're expecting people to be mature enough to say, I have these issues, I, my outlook on this is less than par, I should seek counsel.
No, no, when you say something like that, what I'm saying is, when you say something like that publicly, that is when people come in and say, yo, that's not cool, and let me tell you why that's not cool, because Jay-Z would be one of those people that would tell him why that's not cool, because his mother is gay. And he talks about it on Smile, how she had to pretend so long that she's a thespian, you know, he talks about her having five kids, being a lesbian and hid it so long, so like, he did, it doesn't matter if you love him or her, you know, just long as you're happy. So like, he's, he took it that stand, basically, and I, I talk about this because he spoke out before President Obama spoke out about gay marriage. Um, Jay-Z was one of the African American rappers that spoke up and said, you know, people are people, they deserve to be loved in any way they can. And I think his mother influenced his thinking, so now he goes out and influences the world because that's somebody he loves that's gonna be in this world. So he doesn't want it to be toxic for them, if that makes sense.
Well, yeah, but I mean, but that's my point, like, that's, these are the kind of situations where I respect cancel culture, because when Baby said it, immediately they're like, no, sir, that's not cool, you need, you have to do something about this, like.
Well, public outrage is different than cancel, like you are done, like you should never, ever, ever have a single opportunity to pursue this ever again. That's a, it's a little bit different. Public backlash, like, that's temporary is one thing. Are you a Lil Nas X fan?
I do, I, I am.
And why are you a Lil Nas X fan?
Um, I, well, I like his music and then I think he's very creative and pushed the, pushes the boundaries to create safe spaces, um, for young people. I also feel like he exists outside of the stereotypical, uh, imaging, though he.
I was about to say, please explain that one.
He, he definitely pushes the boundaries, uh, but I feel like his music, how can I say it?
Did you hear the album?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So I think the, the topics he talks about, the way he presents it is in a way that's relatable, um, outside of the gay culture alone. So it's a teachable moment for people who are not a part of the culture. So therefore, he's creating safe spaces for their children, for their brothers, for their cousins, because now they're thinking about, how is my brother, cousin, whoever's mental health? How are they feeling? Are they feeling accepted? So those things, when you push those type of boundaries, you create safe spaces in the world for other people.
You and this wording, you have good wording. Can't even say anything, you have good wording. I mean, I, I like Nas X, I just feel like, I don't, I don't know what he is, like musically, I don't, he's not a rapper to me, he's not a singer. So I think long since, I'm like, will he really be around in 10 years? Like music wise, not, not performing, and actually, if we're honest, his performances are not that good. I like the shock value of him, but like, I've watched the choreography and stuff, it's really sloppy, like, but he's young. And I like what he's doing, I like that he's very outspoken, and I find it very amazing that grown adults are coming out, they're like little boots in, and I'm like, I ain't really doing this, you're a grown man, like, if this boy, this boy is 22, if he wants to live his, when you were out slapping hoes and, and grabbing, grabbing titties while you were in low riders, nobody said anything. So just because he's on the opposite side of the fence, almost doing the same thing, why is it so wrong? Because he's 22 and he happens to be gay doing it, like, we really gonna do this? We really gonna do this?
When people talk about, like what you just said about his performance, I tell people, look at Destiny's Child's first year when they were out, look.
That's a rule.
Look at the first, look at the first four years, look at, look at Work It Out, Beyonce's, look at Beyonce's Work It Out video and, and listen to that song.
I didn't like that song.
Exactly, so that's what I'm saying.
It's just like the first season of a show.
Exactly.
If you go back and watch the first season of a show, it's like, ugh, they were definitely doing their own makeup.
Usually they are, so you know, you have to give people opportunities to grow into who they're becoming.
I'm not knocking, I'm just saying, he's, he's 22, like.
I hear you.
No, but I think that's the, that's the culture now, is like, you have to show up perfect for, and, and that's the problem, because you, you remove access for a lot of people who have a lot of, um, great things to offer the world, but you shut them out because they're not where you think they should be. Instead of honoring their journey, you know?
Well, that's because a new one will pop up tomorrow, like if something happens to Lil Nas X, somebody will take that from them and go another, go a step farther. It's always, we're in a microwave society, so somebody's always gonna pop up.
There's something to be said about that fact too, is that we are used to, well, I'm not gonna say we're used to, but generally speaking, if we were introduced to an artist like 10 or 15 years ago, we're being introduced to them, but they've been in the making for a couple of years, they've had a label, they've had people, they've had management, they've had a team, it's been a whole like, whereas now, we are just meeting people who literally just blew up yesterday on TikTok, and like, so there is no preconceived master plan.
A and R, yeah.
You know what I mean? So it's just like, they, they're raw.
We're just interested with, when you go back and looking at, listen to somebody's music, you're just kind of like, okay, these are interesting songs.
Right, Pink's first album.
Yeah, I'm just like, hey, I actually like, I actually like.
I love that album.
Most girls.
But this wasn't, there you go.
But that wasn't her lane, she did what she had to do to get in, and then she was able to, she talked about that too. She, uh, did what she had to do to get to do what she wanted to do.
Which is, what, what does she do now? I don't, I don't even know.
She does rock pop, pop rock.
Yeah, pop rock. I like it.
I, I, I still love the first album, but you know, that's not what she wanted to do.
I don't.
I mean, she's an amazing performer, like she's singing upside down on a trapeze.
Yeah, she's stupid, I love her. Um, okay, so let's move back into.
I got nothing.
Wait, it's usually happy, you do have a few more minutes. It has been good to get to know you, I think personally though too, so. Let's talk more about kind of like your platform and your ideas, so I, I briefly mentioned, you have a stance about term limits, you have a stance about what somebody should run for office for. This is a leadership blend, so like, why do you think term limits are important? Why do you think that would make someone a better leader? And are you sure you should be making that stance so soon? Because what if you get in there and you love it, and you're like, you know what, I should totally do that?
But the thing is, e- even if I get in there and I love it, I should do something else. I feel like, um, you know, currently in our district, we have representation that's been there for 28 years, this'll be the 28th year. So when you're thinking about 28 years, Atlanta is not the same as it was in 1993.
The world isn't the same as it was in 1993, literally.
And that's my point, and that's why the city of Atlanta has not moved forward as far as its processes, as far as its systems, because if you have people who are instilled in the mindset of the 90s in charge, they don't think that updating your system is important. They don't think that streamlining processes is, it worked, this is how it's always worked, and you lean into that opposed to having some innovation. When you look at, uh, companies, they change out their CEOs maybe every four to five years. Because you created this growth and now it's time for somebody else to come in and spur growth as well. Yes, I think the people at the heart of it, they should, uh, be engaged, however, there are, I mean, when you're talking about people who draw the lines and boundaries of who votes for them. You can really, I mean, I'll leave it there.
Oh, no, 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 I definitely want to see you put the good words on this, put the good words on this, like, I definitely want to see this. But it's funny, because I was literally thinking about that this weekend, because when I was looking at the, uh, trying to avoid another government shutdown and they were at a stalemate, I'm like, this is the problem. The problem is you have outdated leadership, who's stalemating over probably things that aren't even relevant in this space, because that's just their mindset. So I think it's ludicrous at this point to have senators and, and upper leadership in the space that have been there for 30 and 40 years. Like, the world has literally turned on its axis, hell, in the last 10 years, let alone 20 and 30 years, why are you still at the helm of leadership? You need to be moved into a consulting role and let other people matriculate up through this ladder, because it's ridiculous to have them still there. Your mind, the older you get, I tell people this all the time, I'm old and setting my ways, and I'm only 41. So I can only imagine what a 16, 17 year old is telling young senators when you're at the helm of leadership, like, no, this is the way it's always been, we'll figure it out. And that's not the world we live in now, so I absolutely agree at this point, we need to start having a real conversation about term limits, we really do.
I mean, I think innovation comes with fresh ideas. You think about 10 years ago, iPhones were what? You know, now we have pocket computers because we had innovative thinkers to push us forward, and that's what we need as a city. Um, and I, and I talk about it, you know, Microsoft is coming, Airbnb, Twitter's expanding, Google's expanding.
Visa, right, it's built like a hub.
Visas bringing a thousand workers, so you have all of these tech companies coming into this economy. We have to start thinking about the economy because that is what drives everything, because people are looking at house prices right now. So the thing about when, how the housing market goes up, taxes go up, when taxes go up, they go up on businesses, so that means that now a $3 gallon of milk is $5, and now $2.50 for regular gas is $5. Look at Seattle, look at Austin, Texas, look at Silicon Valley, all of these places, I've looked at the data and I've studied, and people are always like, well, how, how are you able to lead? Under 40, I was, uh, pretty much in charge of hiring and managing over 1,200 people in seven different states for the government in its largest peacetime operation. So I have leadership skills, I've done the work and I understand data. That's the thing we have to put together, is doing the work, understanding data and how, how data affects things. Because we're talking about pricing people out of houses, but they won't even be able to eat. You, you see what I'm saying? When, when the food, the cost of food is too high, you're gonna see, uh, unsheltered population grow. And we're not talking about people who are just doing nothing, we're talking about people who get up and go to work every single day
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And work two and three jobs and still cannot afford to have a house.
I feel fastly approaching at this point, we're fastly approaching that. These are the headaches that I get when, because people talk about Atlanta, and I, friends and family who don't live here, like, oh my god, I'm like, no, you don't live there. Like, if you live there and you're getting the inside information from people who are on the ground, it is disturbing, I'm almost to a point now where I can't even think about it, because I'm just like, it's so, it seems so daunting. When you think about it, and we're at a place, especially in the black community, where we're, we're turning it into the have and the have nots. Like, if we're getting into this space where as long as I'm good, I don't care about you, like, it's, it's what, and that, that's not just everyday people, that's our leadership. I feel like that's the way they look at stuff, unbeknownst to them, when you make these kinds of decisions, when you make these kinds of moves, to me, it sends a message that I'm good. So, you know, y'all can figure it out, but I'm good, and that's not.
Atlanta is the tale of three cities, the haves, the have nots, and the have sums. So the have sums make it confusing because that's where that comes from, the have think, oh, well, you have some, you're good. But you have the have nots that are right below the have sums, which kind of, you know, um, oh, when you think about, when you think about area median income right now, you know, it's, it's like 60, 80,000 dollars. But when you add a thousand jobs that are making over 100 to 200,000 dollars, that shifts up to now like the area median income is over 100,000 dollars. Who's shut out of that? Teachers, social workers, police officers, firefighters, all these people who service us every single day and keep us safe and teach our children are shut out of our community. And that's what we're facing, and, and that's why my campaign slogan is moving the heart of the city forward, because those people are the heart of our city.
Really well put, really well put. I don't think people quite fully understand that. I think we, we looked, um, a few, a few months ago at like the income maps and like the distribution of income maps and like the dark, dark, dark red areas which are just blossoming and benefiting from all the stuff that's going on. But I don't think people totally understand like that the lower income is not, these are not just unemployed people, these are not nomadic people, these are, these are working people that fill these very important jobs, that's a really good, really good point.
People miss that all the time.
But the middle is disappearing, it's not like, it does feel like more and more, there are people who are just kind of on the edge, like a paycheck away.
Literally.
A, a lot of people, and, and that is one of, that's one of the reasons why I'm honestly running, because it's like, on my street in 2015, like, we bought our house for 150,000 dollars in 2015. There is a house on my street that's for sale, that is, that sold for like 590, 580 or so. So when you think about that situation, um, people's income just doesn't grow in that way, and not to mention access. We have that, Kroger City Center is the only major grocery store, you could draw a three mile radius around that grocery store and there's not another major grocery store there. So that means that a regular Kroger might see like 5,000 people in a week, where that one is gonna see like 35,000. So it's not gonna be fresh food, even that's your store, it's, it's not gonna have what you need, because.
Get it on my supply.
Yeah.
Wow.
Those are real issues that people, so, so while we have these hot button issues that people want to talk about every minute, let's talk about real world issues that affect everyday people in the district is what I'm focused on. Um, I'm definitely not an established candidate, um, it's just, I've lived it.
Which could work to your advantage, um, to be totally honest, and then also, we, I mean, I love new voices, like I have a sour taste in my mouth with regard to all incumbents period, even if I really mess with them, even if I was campaigning for them before they were an incumbent, like I just, I tend to believe the same thing, um, for that exact reason, especially because depending on who you are, and I, I was a young, young college Republican and did all that stuff, these people, they're small celebrities when they go to certain places, you know, they sit up, they sit on boards and they sit on panels, you know, and there are groupies, there are groupies for, for.
What?
For county commissioner. County commissioners have groupies, like, I'm not kidding, yes, yes, I'm like.
Okay, you do know what a groupie is, like, when we think, when we think of a groupie, a celebrity groupie.
Right.
Yeah, local politicians have plenty of groupies.
You tell me there are groupies that show up to, uh, city council meeting and throw their panties at the people that.
What do you think?
That's, when you say a groupie, that's what I'm thinking.
What do you think are, what do you think former Mayor Reed's DMs look like? Seriously?
Hold on.
They're loaded with nudes, I guarantee you. I haven't even spoken to him, I guarantee you they are.
That is not just be, don't, don't take me there, that is not just because of that. To see him, let me hush, was I gonna say something?
Yes, yes, because I wasn't going there.
You should have took me there, that's a bad example.
Final, uh, uh, go ahead, are we getting close? I don't want to go over time. Are we at the final last time? My point is.
You tried it on that one, you tried it.
My whole point is, I, I appreciate your stance, that was the point I was trying to get to, because I do think everyone needs to understand service, and I do think that it's important that there's fresh blood in there all the time. And I also think old blood can get a little bit stale, like for, for one reason or another, it's not always for some horrible insidious reason, but sometimes it's just that growth.
You, you have, you have blind spots, and sometimes we're not aware of our blind spots, so it, I don't think it's out of malice, but I just, I don't think, I talk about intent versus impact a lot, and it's not their intent, but the impact. Where like not addressing property taxes right now isn't the intent to displace people, but that is the impact, is that it displaces people when you don't take action. So inaction is inaction.
Yeah, agreed.
All right, so in the final minutes, what is, what are the issues you're running on? Let's be clear about that.
I'm focused on affordable housing. I'm focused on affordable housing, inclusive development, and public safety. When I talk about public safety, that's infrastructure, really thinking about making sure people can get back and forth to work seamlessly. Uh, expanding MARTA as much as possible, especially in the southwest side of the city. A lot of, about forty percent of the population does not have personal vehicles, so they depend on public transportation. So no one should have to walk an hour to work because the bus takes two hours. We saw that on Eleven Alive in the city recently. So we wanna make sure that we are thinking about the least of us, as I said before. Um, when everyone thrives, the city thrives. So we have to make sure that we are insulating people, making sure if they wanna be a part of the city of Atlanta, they have a place to call home. That's where the affordable housing comes in. And, and if they choose Atlanta as home, they are included in the development. They're not placed in a place where everything's developing around them, but they can't access it because it's too expensive. That's currently happening in our area. Like I said, we have one grocery store, we have three breweries, a rock climbing gym, and a food hall is coming, but we, people don't have access to fresh food. How does that make sense? We've been asking since twenty-ten.
How y'all end up with a rock wall gym? That, that was a hoop, nevermind. I was gonna put together that area.
Sounds very gentrified.
Literally.
And, and that's what I mean, when, when the community, I mean, definitely, we welcome them and we want them to be a part of the community, but at the same time, we need to balance that with some proactive reach out. Like, um, one of my things, one of my plans is to take the census data from twenty-twenty that's just been released um and look at our zoning and the land that we have available and market to the twenty top retailers that the, the community wants to come to the community and say, hey, come have a conversation with us. This is what we have to offer. This is data. I mean, I work for the Census Bureau, so I know companies use our data to figure out where to open and close. That goes for schools, fire departments, police officers, teachers, everything. The money follows the count, not the need. And that's what we have to remember. So using that data to drive uh the, the efforts to meet the needs is what I wanna do.
Well, we need to not put the contingency clauses when these big companies come, that you can't hire all your talent. Like, a certain percentage of your talent can't come from outside the city, stuff like that.
Actually, Keisha Lance Bottoms did do that with Microsoft in that deal. But I know, I mean.
I wanna see it. I would like to see some receipts.
I could show you the, the, a conference that they talked about it, um, when they announced they were coming here.
Okay, I wanna see this when it happens. I want receipts. You tried it, Larry, I want receipts.
They are hiring a lot. You could, well, I'm active.
And I'm not talking about the VP positions either. I'm talking about, I mean, not just the low-level positions.
Yeah, that's what she said. That's, that's exactly what she said. Not just the low-level janitor positions, but we need representation at all levels.
Yeah, definitely.
I'm gonna have a panel on affirmative action. Do we need to bring that back? Like, I, I'm really concerned about, I'm, I'm, we had a lot of conversations about it when it was going. I, I wanna have a conversation about it. I'm starting to think we might need some, some kind of version of that. I'm, I'm just speaking out loud. We'll talk to um Shelton when he gets here about that, when Shelton comes.
I'm sure Jason said it, though, but schools are more segregated now than they were.
Absolutely.
Uh, which is my concern, we don't have time to get into, but which is my concern about Buckhead. Like, that's exactly what I feel is gonna happen, that Buckhead does what he wants to do. Because their thing, I feel like they're building this off crime. We don't want crime over here, so what we gonna do is get away from y'all, and y'all can figure that out, and we'll do our own thing.
A crime is happening in Buckhead, so how will they stop it from happening? Like, Linux Mall, crime is happening. So if they were their own city today, the same crime would exist, just like in Brookhaven and everywhere else.
They feel like they want their own police, like, there's not enough police, or there's not enough.
Remember that.
But there's so much more to consider than just that.
Yeah, it, it's a lot more. Cause I mean, the thing is, when you split resources, you have less. So just like Brookhaven becoming its own city, Sandy Springs becoming its own city, all those places still have crime. But notice on the news, when things happen there, they say in Atlanta. They're not Atlanta, they're their own city, but they never say the city of Brookhaven.
But a lot of times it is, a lot of times it is. Or it's Jonesboro, or it's Riverdale. Um, it's, yeah, that's very, very true.
I just say that the Buckhead does what he wants to do. That little scene we saw down at the border with them horse people and them, and the Haitians, that's what you gonna start seeing.
Well, I'm moving there immediately.
Where?
Or just like if they try to break off and make it East Cobb, oh no, oh no, I will move to East Cobb. It's just not gonna happen. I'm not gonna let it happen.
My brother was like, well, wait, if Buckhead do that, I'm moving to Buckhead. Uh, yeah, about that. All right, how do people get in touch with you?
Um, they can get in touch with me through my website. It's larrycartermovingforward.com. Also, I am on Instagram, larrycarteratl. I'm on Twitter as well, um, larrycarterforatl. I'm on LinkedIn, larrybcarter2. Anywhere you are, I'm there, too.
What's your TikTok?
Facebook, too. TikTok, I actually have, I just started TikTok.
I'm sure you do.
I just, I literally just started that.
It's enough keeping up with the four I have, let alone having a fifth. No, I'm not, I'm good. Plus, I think people would see another side of me, they probably don't wanna see. So I won't do TikTok, cause I've seen the capabilities, I'm like.
It'll bring something out of you, that you couldn't put back in.
Final thoughts, you don't wanna open Pandora's box because everything will come out, I promise you.
No, this is great. I'm, I'm glad we got to have this conversation. I'm glad people got to see some of the other candidates that are running uh outside of the mayoral's race. This is a huge council that runs the city of Atlanta, that is not just the mayor that runs the city of Atlanta. I'm honestly kinda tired of hearing about the mayor, so thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you. And I, I urge people to learn about government. Local government controls your everyday life.
Please tell me.
So uh, when you think about Congress, city council is like Congress. The president is like the mayor. That, you know, they're separate branches, so it's a checks and balance type of thing. So if you are concerned about, I don't know, a candidate that might be mayor, have a council that can offset that. So, you know, you have a check and balance.
Beautiful.
Okay, I'm sick of both of y'all. So shouts out to our guest today, Mr. Larry Carter, for being with us.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
And uh, yes, as you know, if you live in the city of Atlanta, he will be on your ballot, so you need to check that mark. Um, I think that y'all were the only two. I think it's you and Jason. So we have one that's running for city council, one that's running for school board. You should definitely, if you're in their districts, you should vote for them. As you saw on this panel, they are very astute. And especially Larry, they're very astute and like to use words, good words. And that's what we need in office. We need good words, but truthful words that hit the core.
Diplomacy.
Exactly. Uh, wait, who's next week? Uh, next week, we have.
October eighth.
Uh, okay, I can, I can look at the flyer and see who's behind. You have to put that in. Um, all right, so on next.
Friday, it's twelve.
It's enough that I didn't have this in front of me. Uh, you should know these things sometimes, too, ma'am. Oh, next week, Frank Brown is back with us again. Community and schools, we are definitely getting an update from when he was here the last time, when things were honestly dark, doom and gloom. I'm not even gonna lie, I'm kinda concerned what he's gonna say this time, but we definitely need to know what's going on in the, in our community. So Frank Brown from Communities and Schools of Atlanta Incorporated will be with us again next Friday. Same time, same place, on Leadership Blend with your host, Ricardo D. Rice.